Blowing me away truly, that's like, it's just unfathomable to me really still. What like, what were you on Angelina, like the sixth one, right? Or something like that, something crazy. We're on the sixth one and it's like, yeah, still double digits, which is blowing me away. And this is not easy content. Um, today's gonna actually be maybe not as intense as it has been for the last five. Today, we're gonna be talking a bit about the science of chanting and it's not really about like the philosophy, so to speak. And um, I've spent the last two days rereading this and highlighting everything. Um, and I've really quite enjoyed it actually, because um, I'm a big person that loves like meditation as well. And I love psychedelics and we're gonna be covering that today a little bit. Um, because you know, people use meditation psychedelics to become awa- um awakened. Um, so anyway, let's, let's, let's get started as always. Thank you for being here, my family, my true soul family. Thank you for supporting me as I try and just grow myself and, and, and I'm learning how to best articulate Buddhism, you know? So as always, let me just do the disclaimer, this is not an SGI meeting, okay? This is um, this is just a, a conversation with the Indigo Child, with me, Aaron Indigo. So this has nothing to do with like the, the organisation of Buddhism. Um, and I'm just gonna mute you there Steve, just so everyone's muted. Um, so today we're gonna be um, reading uh, a section called The New Scientific Horizons. If you've got your book on you, let me just check what page that is on. Um, it starts on page ninety-one, yeah? So we're only gonna do part two today and then next week we'll finish this section on Nam Myo Haringe Kyo with part three. So I was gonna read out the different sections we're gonna be talking about today. So the first part is called Quantum Weirdness and the quantum field is something that I'm really, really been investigating a lot recently and I'm realising the power of the quantum field and how we can connect to it. So hopefully we're gonna get some, some cool answers with that. The next section's gonna be called Testing Psychic Phenomena. Um, and the reason I'm gonna really love this with you today, for the last six, seven years of being a Buddhist, it's not actually something we talk about much in the SGI and it's something that I'm trying to pioneer. This conversation needs to be had more, the idea of like, this is all the stuff we're gonna talk about, near-death experiences. Um, the quantum field, it's not something in the Buddhism, especially in the SGI, it's kind of just like chant and have faith, chant and have faith. And even though that's amazing, our generation and all the people that reflections of me, I can tell that we, we, we was born with more questions and like, if we can't answer them questions or satisfy them questions, we're more likely just to leave Buddhism. And so luckily with some of the new authors and hopefully with, with me articulating it in a certain way, we can kind of see how powerful it is, um, and how it all actually is um, intermingled with each other. So the next section, what can death tell us about consciousness? What can death tell us about consciousness? Very powerful. Um, then awakening experiences, the different kind of ways that people become awakened to the eternity of life. Uh, and in that we're gonna be talking about like psilocybin, meditation, uh LSD, stuff like that. Uh, Jose Toda's awakening, so Jose Toda is the second president of the Sokka Gakkai and he actually had an awakening and he was the person that recognised that Buddha meant life itself. And that awakening he had in prison during World War Two, so we're gonna talk a little bit about Jose Toda's awakening. Um, who's one of the only people in SGI history, other than maybe like literally Nitrin himself and then Shaka Mooney, who had like a mystical awakening. And we're gonna talk about the importance of, even though that's important, we should never really be aiming for these like high intense awakened moments, because they're quite um, not everyone's gonna be able to experience that. So we're gonna talk about, a bit about how the president of the SGI had that. But then Dasaku Akida, who's his um disciple and the current living president of the SGI, he's never had an awakened experience, so it's really powerful to be able to compare the two. Um, then the downside of a peak experience and there's more downsides you'd be, you'd um, you'd be surprised to know than, than upsides of, of, of a peak experience. Is mindfulness meditation the answer? Is mindfulness meditation the answer? Then it's gonna be my experience with meditation and that's Johnny Gilbert, the author's experience with meditation. And then finally, finally, today will be the middle way. So as always, quite a lot, quite a lot to get in, in an hour. And as always, if you've got time, hopefully, uh, we'll chant for five minutes at the end. And I'll do a little freestyle, because this, the uh, good old Babylon, they're getting very uh, intense with their games nowadays. So let me share the screen, we'll jump straight in. Oh, give me one sec, let me just open up the PDF. I thought I had it open. Hmm. Cool. So. Be good Angelina, yeah? Thank you. Me and Angelina, we got a thing telepathically going on, she backs me in it, cool. So, let's go, straight into it. Part two, New Scientific Horizons, Quantum Weirdness. So the first area of research and scientific discovery, which points to a shift in understanding regarding the existence of a universal consciousness, is the field of quantum physics. From a theoretical basis, in the early twentieth century, quantum principles have been proven conclusively over the last fifty years in the laboratory. Quantum physics has shown that the world emerges from a deeply interconnected fabric and experiments have shown testable connections between phenomena separate, separate in ti- uh space and time. It has alluded to that the fundamental particles of matter are not made of solid stuff, but are patterns of potential vibration that are impacted by the observer. So I've known about this for about seven, eight years, I was reading books like Ask and It's Given by Jerry and Esther Hicks and they talk about the double slit experiment, which they're gonna talk about in this, which is, if, if no one's looking at something, they've scientifically proven that it vibrates differently to when consciousness is actually on the object. And I don't know if anyone's ever seen this experiment before, but it's very powerful. Everything basically becomes alive when we observe it and they can, they can prove this in science now, which is um, pretty amazing. So carry, let me carry on. Explaining quantum physics is not within the scope of this book, but looking at a few interesting experimental outcomes may help contribute to our understanding of the universe and how chanting can interact with seemingly separate individuals. Action at a distance or quantum entanglement refers to particles interacting with each other at a distance. Experiments have worked with photons that once have interacted with one another, no matter how far apart they are moved from each other, work in a highly correlated and harmonious fashion. American researchers in two thousand and fifteen found the odds against the correlations being caused by chance as one in one hundred and seventy million. And Chinese scientists were able in two thousand and seventeen to show with a satellite the linked harmony of entangled particles eight hundred and seventy miles away from each other. If one accepts the Big Bang Theory of the universe, then all matter was at its outset connected together in a tightly packed fragment before expanding across space. In that sense, it was entangled and interacted from the very beginning, like the photons in the experiment. Could this set up a non-local interconnectedness, a non-separation between any particles in the universe? Further photon experiments have brought up another surprising conclusion, which runs counter to a traditional view of how matter works. This is what I was talking about now. The double slit experiment involves beaming a light towards two tiny slits with a detector screen. Standard science would expect the light photons to act like particles and produce a cluster of points on the detector screen. Instead however, the light acts like a wave, creating an interference pattern, which scientists have concluded show the photons travelling through the slit not as defined matter, but as a cloud of potential in waveform. However, if a detector screen is put on the slits, the light acts as a normal particle and clusters of impact points appear on the far screen. Incredibly, the way the observer observes the photons impacts on their behaviour and nature. Pascal Jordan stated, "Observations not only disturb what has to be measured, they produce it." Adrian Nelson, an author and psychologist, sees a quant- sees quantum physics not only as challenging the view that science can remove the subjective observer from its verifiable evidence, but also as creating a mystery which sees consciousness having an impact on our environment. As a result, it offers the possibility of consciousness working on a non-local level. Some quantum scientists reject any interpretation of the results of quantum science, claiming that the results just are and that with our limited perceptions, we cannot, we cannot fully even explain quantum weirdness. This may be the case, but all science inherently gets interpreted by human beings. It is only humans who create, test and observe phenomena. In contrast, many quantum scientists have come to conclusions approaching those of Adrian Nelson's, including the founder, uh, the founding fathers of quantum mechanics such as Max Planck. Quantum biology is a new and uh, burg- I can never say this word, burguing science, which seeks to explain some of the mysteries and unexplained workings of nature via quantum physics. Photosynthesis, the navigation of migrating birds and the process of tadpole metamorphisising into frogs has been finally explained through theories of entanglement and potentially found in quantum effects. Thus, these mysterious properties are not confined to the very subatomic levels in which particles, in which quantum mechanics was first proven, but function within the macrocosmic world, including ourselves. So that's the first section, talking about how, trying to get us to understand from a scientific point of view, that we are connected to every single person. If like two little photons can vibrate across different sides of the world when they do experiments, then, 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 then I'm definitely connected to you guys, do you know what I mean? And it's just starting to slowly using science prove how through intention, through prayer, through thought, we can actually affect other people. And it's only recently that these kind of scientific experiments have started to prove the, um, and how valid that is. So let me continue, Testing Psychic Phenomena. The next area worth considering in relation to consciousness is the study of psychic phenomena or PSI research, as it is now commonly referred to. This is a somewhat controversial field, because it has been traditionally categorised, together with many uncredible and quite plainly superstitious beliefs in the paranormal, such as hauntings, witchcraft, fairies and the like. Steve Taylor makes an important distinction between the soft paranormal phenomena, which are highly questionable and lack any meaningful evidence, and hard paranormal phenomena, where a rigorous testable evidential basis has been established over the last few decades through scientific inquiry. This category includes telepathy, precognition, remote viewing and remote influence, also known as psychokinesis, the ability to influence a physical systems with mental intention. This is a challenging area, which materialist scientists reject out of hand, since these hard PSI phenomena not only contradict, but are thoroughly inexplic- inexplicable when considered from the perspective of a purely materialistic worldview. In response to the challenge, PSI researchers have experienced contemporary PSI experiments have been carried out with stringent scientific methods, even more rigorously than in many other areas of scientific study in order to counterclaim, uh, to, in order to count, to counterclaims of flawed mythology. Akida, President Dasaku Akida, has also considered these kinds of experiments and observed. Experiments in extrasensory perception offer definite indication of how human beings can influence each other in a purely spiritual realm. So that's basically what I was saying, let me say that one more time, long live President Akida, says it the best. Experiments in extra, uh, extrasensory perception offer definite indication of how human beings can influence each other in the purely spiritual realm. In two thousand and eight, the psychologist Dean Radin conducted experiments using photons in a similar way to the quantum system experiment that we have discussed earlier. However, this time, Radin wanted to see what the influence of consciousness or mind could have on a quantum system. A photon was directed to travel down two possible pathways. When the path was not resolved by observed measurements as we saw earlier, a wave pattern was produced. If one pathway was blocked, a particular signature was produced showing the photon took that, uh, that route as a particle. Radin then arranged that participants in an electromagnetically shielded chamber direct their attention to observe in their mind the path of the photon. Radin found a marked increase in the photons taking one path and being registered as a particle rather than diffusing as a wave. Particularly with exp- uh particularly with experienced mediators involved, who perhaps had a greater skill at focus and attention, he calculated the odds against chance of the results occurring to be a hundred and seven thousand to one. With controlled trials where no attention took place, there was no significant reduction of the interference pattern. In later experiments, Radin trialled five thousand participants all around the world and the findings seemed to indicate that even from thousands of miles away, the individual could influence the quantum system. Such results point to a role for consciousness beyond the brain and unbounded by space. So already, what is, what he's kind of saying here already is that this, we all think we have consciousness within us. Actually, consciousness is within us and outside of us and our brain is like a radio uh, station that like locks in into it. So our brain, yeah, it has consciousness in it, but so does my little finger, so does my dreadlock and so does the air around me. Um, so such results point to a role for consciousness beyond the brain and unbounded by space. Human telepathy, the ability to transmit words, emotions or images to another person's mind by means other than the known senses is not a faculty we may encounter on a day-to-day basis and is at best a weak phenomenon. And yet, scientists have been able to pick up communication or connection between minds, particularly with pairs who share an emotional bond. This is where me and Chris would be amazing, me and him are telepathic madly. Um, it's because we spent so much time together and like lifetimes together. And um, we also spent lockdown in one bedroom, so that, that will help you to uh, get into someone's head. Um, so this is, this is really important part, this is a highlighted section, I really, I really resonated with this bit. Um, so experiments on twins and bonded pairs, and bonded pairs are best friends, lovers, brothers and sisters, people that are, you know, you're really connected to someone, so not just twins. Experiments on twins and bonded pairs from the nineteen sixties to the present have shown how a stimulus such as flashing lights that affect the brain activity of the receiving participant also affects uh, the other participant in terms of their brain activity, even when they're in a dis- uh, they are a distance away in a dimly lit electromagnetically shielded room. So let's just say you've got two twins or two lovers or two brothers and sisters, they look, they lock one brother miles away in an electromagnetically shielded room, by the way. They shine a light in one, in, in someone's eyes and in that bunker somewhere hidden away, the brain of that friend starts to light up as if the, the light is right in front of their eyes. So it's showing you, wow, god damn, we really are kind of connected. So, uh, Gansfield's telepathy experiments attempted to produce a particular receptive mental state for participants by blocking sensory input from the outside, which is like the bunker, and relaxing the individual to a dreamlike state between waking and sleeping. The second participant is then taken into an isolated area at least fifty feet away and shown a clip of four random selected images. The sender is asked to mentally project specifically one of the images to the receiver in the relaxed state as a target image. Afterwards, the receiver is shown four images and ranks them in order of what came to her mind. Only if the correct image is ranked one or first is the session a hit. If random chance was at play over time, the hit rate would be twenty-five percent. A one in four chance and yet over the thousands of times this experiment has been conducted in multiple studies, the hit rate is thirty-two to thirty-five percent. A highly notable statistical difference from a scientific perspective. Since the odds against chance of this happening are calculated at one in twenty-nine quintillion. Quintillion, I can't even say that word, it's madness. Again, rigorous controls and checks have been put in place to assure skeptics of these results. Rather than seeing this evidence as the sending of remote signals between brains, could this be similar to the way entangled particles correlate? No information is actually sent between them, but they are entering contemplatory states fused to a greater field. Dean Radin has stated, "Quantum mechanics reminds us that the universe is ultimately a holistic, tightly integrated web and thus it is not out of the question that no signals need to pass between brains." From a holistic perspective, all brains are already connected to everything from the get-go and not just through space, but through time too. If in ultimate reality, we are part of the greater self, a wider consciousness, the separation between human mind is not fundamental and the ability to enter mental space of others on occasion is therefore a possibility. Inciting similar experiments from some time earlier, Akida has stated, "It seems to me significant that the", and this is Dasaku Akida, the president of the SGI, "it seems to me significant that the inner influences of our life forces on other li- on others' lives, so long postulated by Buddhism, is now being examined and demonstrated by non-Buddhist parapsychologists, psychologists." So, be good, do you understand that bit, yeah? Perfect, 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 Moon, or Munna does, I hope the rest do, anyway. Okay, okay, Maria does. So, what can death tell us about consciousness? Death, death, heavy subject, I've had to lecture on this a few times, heavy subject. But um, there's no point trying to get, be all spiritual and, and, and create a, an Instagram account, calling yourself like a Reiki healer or something, if you can't deal with death, you honestly have to, you have to be able to understand and get to grips with that. So, the next area of study in this developing uh, perspective does not involve refined experiments and must gain its evidence from personal antidote sources. This is because it deals with the most sensitive of subjects, the death of a human being. And yet, a body of research in this field has led a number of senior academics to the conclusion that it provides likely proof of a universal consciousness. One of the leaders in this field is Peter Fenwick, a neuropsychologist and senior lecturer at King's College, University of London. Fenwick has carefully collated over many decades accounts of near-death experiences, deathbed visions and deathbed coincidences. Near-death experiences are highly lucid visions and experiences which take place during a state of temporary brain death, such as when a patient suffers a cardiac arrest and in which all monitoring devices assert that the brain is completely shut down. From the research, around ten percent of patients experienced lucid visions, often of a compassionate, brilliant light and feelings of peace, joy or bliss. These are common to all cultures and despite some cultural variations, these common elements pop up regardless of age, gender, gender or even religious faith or lack of it. About one-third of the experiences are also preceded by an out-of-body experience, some of which have accurately described what has happened in the hospital room when the patient was fully unconscious. Fenwick has also studied deathbed visions in which the dying describe how they meet visions of dead relatives and again, the journey to a terrain of light, love and compassion. And deathbed coincidences which seem to involve a drive on the part of the dying person to reach out and connect with people emotionally close to them. Irrespective of the distance involved, to reassure and say goodbye to them. These can take the form of lucid dreams by the relatives of those who are near to the moment of death, but can also occur when awake. Fenwick's research has not led him to a belief in a particular afterlife or a spirit life, but it has resulted in him concluding that there is a likelihood of a greater field of consciousness. If consciousness can occur in the absence of brain activity, then how can consciousness derive solely from the brain? No single satisfactory explanation based on science, brain science has been advanced. Fenwick also rejects the possibility of coincidences regarding premonitions experienced by relatives due to the sheer quantity of evidence he has accumulated, often when the death was not expect- uh, expected at all. Again, a wider field of connection between the self is seen as the most likely explanation. Near-death experiences have been looked at by SGI President Akida in his dialogue with astronomer and mathematician Professor Chandra Wickramasingh, Space and Eternal Life. Wickramasingh tells Akida that near-death experiences may eventually provide us with insight into life, consciousness and mind. Akida states, "At the very least, this phenomena can be said to suggest the possibility that rather than all of the body and mind's functions being exhausted at death, they continue to exist in some form and that ultimately neither psychology, pharmacological nor neurological interpretation suffice to satisfactory, satisfactorily explain the import of near-death experiences." Wickramasingh then affirms, "The data does indeed appear consistent with the hypotheses of a consciousness that leaves the body and has an independent identity and experience after death." These words very much echo Fenwick's conclusion of mind as a field, but he does stress it is important to remember that any theory which tries to explain non-local mind does not display current, uh, displace, sorry, current neuroscience, but leaves it as a valuable basis on which consciousness acts through and within the brain. Awakening experiences, this is my favourite part of this chapter. So the final area of study, which may shed some light on the possibility of a universal consciousness is the research on transcendent or awakening experiences. The author, Emily Asphaharni Smith, defines such experiences as follows. "The word transcend means to go beyond or to climb. A transcendent or mystical experience is one which we feel we have risen above the everyday world to experience a higher reality." "Common features of such experiences are heightened awareness, positive emotional states such as love and compassion and a sense of greater connection to people, nature or even the whole world." It is, it is in these last facets in which, to a greater or lesser extent, our minds, our, our self, our sense, sorry, of self diminishes and our fusion with a greater whole manifests, that we viscerally experience an awareness which points to a greater consciousness beyond the confines of our limited ego. Steve Taylor describes three key triggers. "I see a young king in a green t-shirt, you're amazing." Yeah? I don't know who you are, but I love you. Anyway, Steve Taylor describes three key triggers of awakening. Transcendent experiences, contact with nature, spiritual practice and psychological turmoil. Within awakening experiences, there is also a range of degrees of intensity. From low-level experiences of simply heightened awareness and feeling more alive, to medium-intense experiences of a sense of interconnection, to high-intensity experiences in which we feel fused with the essence of the universe or our sense of limited self dissolves. Taylor claims these experiences are not uncommon, with a two thousand and eight study finding eighty percent of, hey, I see you bro, I see ya. Um, sorry, these experi- Taylor claims these experiences are not uncommon, with a two thousand and eight study finding eighty percent of four hundred and eighty-seven respondents having had some form of awakening or spiritual experience. These experiences transcend all religions and are equally experienced by the non-religious. They again point from an exper- uh, experiential basis towards an inherent fusion with something beyond the microcosm of the individual, a fusion with the great law of life of the universe. Jose Toda's awakening. Second Sokka Gakkai president, Jose Toda's, uh, Jose Toda's enlightenment in prison echoes a high-intensity transcendental experience derived from spiritual practice. In early March nineteen forty-four, which is when World War Two was happening, Toda had been chanting ten thousand Nam Myo Haringe Kyo's a day and rereading again and again the Lotus Sutra. Dwelling on a passage from the introductory Immeasurable Meanings Sutra, which provides thirty-four negations of what a Buddha is not, neither self nor others, neither square nor round etcetera, neither black or white. He came to an impasse as to his understanding of the inherent meaning of these lines. Toda returned to chanting. Dasaku Akida relays in volume four of his novel, The Human Revolution, what happened next. "Filled with a boundless rapture, he began to walk. It was a tiny cell, he clumped, he clumped up and down, his shoulders braced, his fists tightly clenched. He thought Buddha is life itself and it's, and it's an expression of life. It does not exist outside of ourselves, but does exist within our lives. No, it exists outside our life too, it is one reality of the life of the universe." And by the way, when you do your SGI exams to be able to lecture, that's one of the questions they ask you. What did Jose Toda awaken to in prison? I know so much about it, I could tell you the temperature of the floor that his feet was on, I swear to God. Um, I love, I love that book, uh, The Human Revolutionist, I'm actually gonna get it tattooed on me. "He wanted to proclaim it to everyone, to anyone. The small cell seemed to expand endlessly in that instant. Toda in fact had two awakening experiences and it was the second one in which he experienced himself as a participant in the Lotus Sutra's ceremony in the air. Now, if you was with me like three study sessions back, we talked about the Lotus Sutra, how it's like full of metaphors, how it talks about a big treasure tower, Sally Smith emerging from the, uh, from the ground, remember? And um, and it talks about like countless Bodhisattvas being there, uh, and like making a promise to, to return at the critical point. Now, of course, it's very like, very much like a metaphor, but Jose Toda in prison awoken to the fact that his eternal spirit was there somewhere. Um, and that his mission was to be a Bodhisattva and to lead the Bodhisattvas at this critical, critical time where like we've become the most distant from our spirit. And I think you should all remember, we talked about the three stages of, of life after Shaka Mooney died. The former, the middle and the latter day of the law. And the latter day of the law is where we are right now and it's a time where people are absolutely lost. Absolutely lost and they're following these fake sovereign governments and they don't know who they are, a spiritual individual beings. And um, yeah, so uh, Jose Toda recognised, well, no one's doing the work here that like Shaka Mooney like prophesied and predicted, maybe it's me in prison. And uh, it bloody well was, trust me, his, if you know anything about Jose Toda, I might just get a massive photo of his face tattooed on me, I, he's, he's, there's no words for this man, by the way. And again, it's not me like, you know, bowing down and like calling him like some sensei and chucking roses on his feet like I've done when I used to be a Hindu, well, I was never a Hindu, but I was involved in the Hindu community and you know, when like Sri Swami Vishwanda walks in, literally people drop to the floor, like it's like the, the closest your chest can get to the floor to show that you're nothing like him. And then they chuck roses at his feet and I'll be sitting at the back with like my, my kind of hijab on, thinking, I'm not sure about this, but like I respect the brother, he's cool, but I'm not sure I wanna like chuck roses on his feet. And actually, my love for Jose Toda is ten times more profound than even the love that they think they have for someone like Sri Swami Vishwanda. Because I actually recognise he's enlightened who I am inside, there's no way that I'm thinking I'm less than him. Any, any leader that makes you think that they're higher than them, yo, you've gone on some satanic path, in my, in my opinion, but that's a whole other conversation. So let me carry on. Toda's transcendent encounter were on the high-intensity range of Taylor scale. Toda later described the fusion as follows, "It is like lying on your back in a wide open space, looking up, looking up at the sky with arms and legs outstretched. All that you wish for immediately appears. No matter how much you may give away, there is always more, it is never exhausted." And that has gotta be the truth of life, like we are limitless eternal beings, there's nothing like, that's why we should never be scared to give. Even if you haven't got much, you should never be scared to help someone or give something to someone, because we are limitless beings. And the moment you remember that, the moment you embody that information, the more you will get from the universe and the more you wanna just give away, because you realise, I'm actually just a channel, I'm just something right now to help someone, you know what I mean? So, that was how he explained his awakening. At the beginning of the twentieth century, the writer William James catalogued such awakenings as peak experiences that can profoundly result in a deep personal change. The chanting of Nam Myo Haringe Kyo afforded Toda this world-changing, transcending experience and his tireless struggle to share Nitrin Buddhism was founded on a desire, similar to Shaka Mooney and Nitrin, to empower ordinary people to experience a similar fusion with the universe and an elevated life state. What the chanting of the Daimoku Nam Myo Haringe Kyo affords is a grounded, vital and centring spiritual practice which allows participants to experience transcendent awakening across the scale from low to in, uh, low intensity to occasionally high-intensity states depending on application, time and effort. Very important this part here. "It is notable that although Toda's enlightenment in prison as a peak, high-intense experience is central to SGI's history and development, Toda's successor, President Dasaku Akida, who's alive today uh, in Japan, does not claim a similar moment of full awakening. Instead, through Akida's example described in his novels, The New Human Revolution, he embodies consistently over time an individual in a high and awakened life state through his behaviour as a human being. For me, this steady grounded fusion with the higher reality is a more realistic- is a more realistic and practical aspiration for ordinary experiences." Aspiration for ordinary people, sorry. We cannot all have extreme peak experiences, but we can through regular chanting, ground ourself in that transcendent state and use that experience to pervade our, uh, actions in daily life. So what we're saying here, um, really quickly is that this is like Buddhism, and this is when I started to really understand Buddhism. Buddhism is nothing about like having some like, you know, massive ayahuasca trip and like becoming aware of who we are. There's nothing wrong with that, but it's about, I, I know a thousand people, by the way, that have done ayahuasca, that take mushrooms all the time and they're currently cheating on their wife today. So well, like, how does that prove anything? You know what I mean? Or they're like, they're taking ayahuasca, but then they're also like talking to people like shit and there's still so much ego there. These drugs are amazing and it can definitely lift you and shift you and change you and definitely is like, you know, it's, it's different. But first of all, what if you can't get access to ayahuasca? What, what then? Do you know what I mean? What if you can't get access to mushrooms? How do we as individual, ordinary people activate our life state and how do we guarantee that we'll be able to have an elevated life state and come with compassion for the rest of our lives? Spending two hundred pound in Earl's Court doing ayahuasca one time on a Saturday is not gonna transform the karma of my future, future children. You understand? It might change the way that I live my life. Yeah, a hundred percent. I might cut out meat instantaneously, but it's a, it's, it's a quick fix and it's not, and it's, it's again, something external. Now, I'm, I'm one hundred percent, I'm, I'm a psychedelic person, so I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to begrudge psychedelics, but it is very clear as a deeply aware spiritual man, psychedelics are just, it's just fun. It's just platings. Yeah, they're medicines. But who we are as eternal beings, we can tap into this for free using the vibration of our voice. So I guess that's kind of like the importance of what he was talking about here, but let me carry on. So now we're gonna talk about the downside of peak experiences. So the balanced and pragmatic approach to transcendent experiences found in the SGI is all the more important if one examines the downsides and pitfalls to awakening experiences, especially in their extreme forms. Scientific research on awakening experiences has often centered on a similar, high-intense state induced by drugs. For a scientist, this is the most predictable and trackable method to analyze as the state can be induced chemically in the laboratory. Early studies in the nineteen sixties centered on LSD before the risks and downsides of this drug were fully certain, uh, ascertained. Most recently, research has looked at the similar hallucinogenic drug called psilocybin, which it is claimed in a supportive and controlled environment can result in positive mystical experiences. Hallucinogenic drugs, this is super important. Angelina, I'm gonna need to see you get your highlighter up. Hallucinogenic drugs may well induce awakened experiences in controlled circumstances, but to me, the process seems fraught with risk. For every person who has a positive connecting experience, there is the possibility of having another bad trip. Human response to drugs and medicine varies greatly depending on an individual's metabolism and psychology's makeup and their makeup. Chemically playing with a person's mind seems extremely dangerous, even if only a minority have a negative reaction to the drug. I have met too many acid causalities over the year to consider this could be a healthy and mass-produced means to awakening. And it was that sentence right there, cause I'm love, I love, I love, I love, give me some ayahuasca, give me some mushrooms, give me some changa, give me some five, five M A O, give me some Bufo. I've done it. I've been there. Yeah? But it was that last sentence that really made me, as an aware spiritual man, and we're all spiritual, but I'm engaging in my spirituality. It says, "Over the years to consider this could be a healthy and mass-produced means of awakening." Imagine that was the case, like, oh, you wanna become awakened, you have to come on my course, take these external drugs and then you could become awake and some kind of like mass-produced way. It's not the way. It can't be the way. It's a, it's, it's an amazing thing and it's here to help us and it's here to heal us, one hundred percent and jump in. But just like it really, as someone who's engaged in the power of us internally, we don't need them things. You know what I mean? We do not need them to actually be able to give the best of ourselves to society. Let's just say that. But they're amazing. So please don't think I'm out here begrudging any psychedelics. But if you're gonna do psyched, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, the only ones I do are from the frogs from the Amazon or, you know, like ayahuasca from a shaman from Mexico or Bufo or something like, I'm like, I'm not an advocate for anything made in the lab. One hundred percent. That's Babylon with their fingers up your, your Jaxi. So another area of peak experience that must be treated warily are those that arise from the third of Taylor's key categories, psychological turmoil. Now, this is gonna talk about Eckhart Tolle, um, and I don't wanna go too deep, but I used to like Eckhart Tolle, the power of now. But, um, I found out a lot about him and I am majorly against him now. And, uh, this isn't the space for me to talk about why, but, um, anyway, Johnny will speak about it to some extent. So one of the most lauded of the new age writers, Eckhart Tolle, or Tolle, came to his awakening through having essentially a nervous breakdown. Tolle's depression got to a point where he kept repeating, "I cannot live with myself any longer." From this point, however, he experienced a kind of surrender of himself and his suffering, which resulted in a profound transcendent experience. What concerns me about lauding Tolle's experience is that for many people at that point of mental collapse, enlightenment does not beckon and sadly suicide or hospitalization are more likely an outcome. To glorify Tolle's and others' extreme awakening resulting from severe psychological turmoil is to set them as aspirational and yet the risks of such a route are extremely high. Tolle may advocate a different path in which being present in the now is the route to enlightenment, but his own example is of a far darker and potentially more dangerous experience. Tolle and many other new age writers see enlightenment and awakening as a process of dissolving the ego or rejecting the self. Although the ego or lesser self can be the cause of much suffering and unwise action in the world, its total rejection can also cause equally great psychological and social problems. Teachings and books which see the ego as the enemy reinforce a view of enlightenment propounded by some other traditional eastern philosophies and branches of Buddhism. That Buddhahood can only be achieved by fully rejecting the self. A healthy ego or sense of self in fact allows us to develop respect for oneself and others. Resilience, the capacity to develop meaningful relationships and a sense of meaning. Trauma in childhood has been found to damage our ego, our sense of self-worth and to a result in a range of social and psychological difficulties. So we're at the last section now. Is mindfulness meditation the answer? Researchers Dr. Miguel Faraz and Catherine Wickholm have examined the issue in their book, The Buddha Pill. They describe the limitation to some of the research of mindfulness and also some of the adverse effects of meditation practice centered on dissolving the ego. One experience they describe is of a woman who, having been on many meditation retreats, found her sense of self dramatically changing. Despite thinking that this was part of the ego dissolving process, she couldn't help feeling anxious and frightened. The retreat teacher encouraged her to keep meditating. Yet by the next day, she was seeing a psychiatrist and spent the next fifteen years being treated by psychotic depression, of which part of the time she was hospitalized. Faris and Wickholm go on to outline further examples and a body of research on the potential negative effects of meditation, including depression, anxiety, panic and disorientation. This is not to say that all meditation is risky or results in adverse effects, but it is worth, uh, worth being wary, particularly in the example above, where a focus on the disillusion of the ego is involved. And as many times, man, I've been like, uh, like, uh, in like a psychedelic event or I've been somewhere and like a shaman's like, it's all about ego death, man. It's all about the death of the ego and you gotta like transcend the ego. And like luckily I was Buddhist at that time and I was like, no, 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 my philosophy tells me the ego actually should be, we should be pumping up the ego so that it is, um, it's your, it's like your greater self. Like the idea of ego death, like what am I just gonna, and I've had ego death. One time I was in, I was in Amsterdam, twenty-third birthday, I woke up in Amsterdam and I was on, I was on truffles and mushrooms. And I remember running around Amsterdam, going up to like groups of girls and guys going, excuse me, what's my name? Please, what's my name? Like, I was panicking, like, I don't know who I am. Um, and, and so, and that's my only experience of ego death and Jesus. Like if you're not in the right circumstances, I mean, it's dangerous. Like it's very dangerous. So, um, yeah, this is not to say that we shouldn't be meditating. Meditating is such a profound thing, but this is just talking about the profound differences with chanting and meditating and the different forms of Buddhism that kind of believe that you can't become happy in this lifetime unless you sort your ego out. When we're very much about, no, 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 let's clean up, let's transform, let's alchemize our ego so that it's the best version of who we could be, so that I'm the best Aaron Indigo. Not that I'm the best floating shell that doesn't even know who I am, man or woman, just this like floating energy. It can't work like that. It can do for some people. Maybe they need to just dissolve the ego and like clap their hands with drums somewhere. And that is an absolutely vital role because everything is energy. But for me, and I'm guessing for the people that are resonating with me on this call right now, we're all reflections. We all, we all wanna be able to walk into society or into our work and be the best version of who we can be. And I've actually got some guidance about work in a minute. That is, um, for anyone that has like a job right now, that's quite difficult, nine to five. So I'm gonna bring that up in a minute. So anyway. Uh, in contrast, SGI philosophy seeks to fuse with the greater self and to put the ego in proper perspective, but not to destroy it. So when we're chanting, we're fusing with the mystic law so that we ourselves and our consciousness is connected. We're not trying to destroy our ego or transcend it. As President Ikeda states in a speech to the University of California on April the first nineteen seventy-four, "To live for the greater self does not mean abandoning the lesser self, for the lesser self is able to act only because of the existence of the greater self. The effect of that relationship is to motivate the desires and attachments common to all human beings to stimulate the advancement of society." Way, that is it. "To live for the greater self does not mean abandoning the lesser self." Yeah, we still have them three root chakras and we can't do nothing without the root chakra if it's not grounded. So that's a really important part of what I would call true Buddhism, understanding it's not about transcending the self. There can also be a presumption that awakening experiences by themselves confer a change in behavior for the better. Wickholm and Faris examine the role of Zen Buddhism in Japan, its involvement in supporting the Japanese imperialistic war efforts and its lack of interest in morality and social ethics. The renowned Zen authority D T Suzuki wrote, "Zen is extremely flexible in adapting itself." If, by the way, Zen Buddhism is another form of Buddhism and it's all about kind of just transcending the self and being just like peaceful and like kind of like passively accepting a lot of the shit that goes on in the world. "Zen is extremely flexible in adapting itself to almost any philosophy and moral doctrine as long as it is, as its intuitive teachings is not interfered with. It may be found wedded to, um, anarchism or fascism, communism or democracy, atheism or idealism." Brian Victoria researched Zen's involvement in World War Two in which the Japanese military authorities used Zen philosophy, meditation techniques and the explicit support of Zen Buddhist leaders to advance the war machine. Violence and killing were even, uh, were even regarded as synonymous with Zen. And if you know much about like Buddhism, especially in Japan and the history of it, there's something called on Netflix, even though I'm not, I know Netflix is the cabal, but there's something on Netflix called, um, The Age of the Samurai, I think it's called. And it talks about the different leaders of Japan and literally it shows you how they literally used Buddhism to, um, justify war a lot of the time. But it would, it would have been Zen Buddhism mostly. These examples starkly contrast with the actions of the two, first two presidents of the Soka Gakkai, Makoguchi and Toda, who stood up against the military authorities in World War Two. This example is important to highlight the need for a growing philosophy behind any spiritual practice to fully realize human potential. The current explosion of mindfulness meditation practices has been driven by extensive scientific research on its health benefits and by the appeal of its secularization separated from any philosophy, religion or moral code. Many have found beneficial effects from this practice, but in examining the hundreds of studies of the effects on participants, Faris and Wickholm found that barely any research had involved any active controlled group to ensure scientific rigor. There has also been a backlash from established meditation groups that what is being produced is muck mindfulness, which may afford relaxation, but does not offer deep personal change. In focusing merely on non-judgmental awareness in the now, that Eckhart Tolle always talks about, mindfulness can allow individuals to passively accept their circumstances and without any ethical backbone, participants' choices will not necessarily be wiser. It has also been noted by Faris and Wickholm that large multinational corporations have embraced mindfulness in the workplace because a happier and more relaxed employee is more productive. The end goal is not self-improvement, but the interests of the company to maximize profits. More worryingly, the U S Marine Corps have also used mindfulness to increase the military effectiveness of their troops, a far cry from the Buddhist, uh, pacism and which echoes the Zen's role in World War Two. So I think we've got two more, three more pages. I hope you're cool with me. We're nearly done. This is now his, um, experience, the author's experience. And then we're gonna be finished. Ten more minutes. "My own experience of awakenings and meditations echoes some of the research I have outlined above. After ten years of practicing Nichtrin Buddhism and receiving many conspicuous and inconspicuous benefits." So conspicuous benefits means getting the Range Rover or the car that you want. Inconspicuous benefits means changing your family karma at the root or changing the tenants of your heart that makes you suffer. But most people wouldn't know about that. So I'm currently on the stage of inconspicuous benefits. Like I'm finding who my true angels are. I'm finding out who really loves me. I'm changing my tenants. But, um, I'm still praying on them conspicuous benefits to come, but they will. I'll never be defeated. "I came to a major obstacle with my health. I began suffering severe insomnia, which in turn led to anxiety. This was initially triggered by a personal conflict with someone, but was derived from my underlying tendencies. In desperation, I began practicing mindfulness meditation for its mental health benefits and to help me sleep. I initially found it helped relax me and so although I never stopped chanting or going to SGI discussion meetings, they took somewhat of a backseat to a more lengthy meditative practice. Along with meditating for around an hour a day, I read associated lecture, uh, literature, which also, which although secular, was describing a philosophy associated with the mindfulness of living in the moment, of non-judgmentalism, the rejection of the ego and moral relevantism. After a month or two, the insomnia returned, but I continued with the meditation in the hope of a breakthrough. I aspired to a new me, a wiser and more enlightened version of my former self. However, I had a shocking argument with the teacher I was working with that year, which on reflection was due to my increased passivity as a result of the meditation and to the fact that I was not pulling my weight anymore in planning lessons with her. At the end of the year, I moved to another job as a senior teacher in another school, which was even more challenging. My anxiety and insomnia increased and I desperately tried to use the meditation to diminish them, in the main unsuccessfully. I wondered if I would get to a point of ego delusion, disillusion, but instead I suffered more and became more selfish and dysfunctional with my family. Psychological turmoil did not provide an awakening or peace like it did with Tolle. "The idea of a long retreat away from the challenges of the world appealed to me greatly and I went spiritually shopping around various retreats and religious centers. Just at that point, when I was about to book a holiday to India on my own, away from my family, I finally sought medical treatment for my insomnia. Within weeks of getting the right treatment, my insomnia and anxiety were gone and I had what I described as a lightbulb moment. Mindfulness had not given me the health benefits I sought and I decided to fully reconnect with my Buddhist practice with the SGI, where I had truly received benefit and an approach that engaged me with society. This is merely my personal experience. I acknowledge that many people derive benefit from mindfulness and occasionally I will use the breathing techniques at extreme moments of stress, but I have never looked back after that moment of re-engagement with the act of chanting with the SGI." Last page. "The chanting of Nam Myuharenge Kyo is a grounded practice which provides an ongoing awakening experience." Most important, an ongoing awakening experience is the journey. It's never the destination. It's never the ego disillusion. It is never that. It is the journey. How do I keep my vibration as high and as awakened and in my state of Buddhahood as possible for the rest of my life? And it can be a bit scary. I'm gonna have to chant Nam Myuharenge Kyo for the rest of your life. Well, you could, you always have access to it, my kings and my queens. Yeah? It's beautiful to know we have access to that. So the chanting of Nam Myuharenge Kyo is a grounded practice which provides an ongoing awakened experience. Not like, just like pop a pill and I'm enlightened. This is in Richard Corst, this, as Richard Corsten describes, is neither a supernatural quality which enables you to perform superhuman or magical feats, nor is it a transcendental state divorced from the everyday reality of this world. Can you imagine if we became supernatural and, uh, we transcended this everyday reality? Who the hell is gonna listen to me? They're gonna be like, who is this supernatural guy? Like I've suddenly become a deity or I've become some like god uh, and I'm no longer proving as an ordinary person the power of Buddha within me. And that's why I love Richard Corsten. We've talked about him once before. He was the, the first ever, uh, uh, general director of the SGI UK. He passed away, but, um, I know a lot of members that used to like roll with him. And yeah, man. So let me, this is, this is what chanting is. This is what true Buddhism is. Yeah? This is what spirituality is and this is what it means to be a spiritual person in twenty twenty-one in the great agenda. You know what? This sentence right here. "Chanting is neither a supernatural quality which enables you to perform superhuman or magical feats, nor is it a transcendental state divorced from the everyday reality of this world. The Daimoku of chanting Nam Myuharenge Kyo is a middle way which avoids the extremes of an awakening experience, desiring as I did, a, um, epiphany or hallelujah moment, and instead is refreshing, vital and connected to the greater self, but also connected and concerned for the potential of others as well as our own. Overall research on quantum physics, PSI phenomena, near-death experiences and awakening is challenging the standard materialistic reductionist view of science and the world. In turn, it is pointing to the likelihood of a universal mind or consciousness which could equate with the mystic law. So we call it the mystic law, the quantum field. As Buddhists, it's the mystic law, the law of the mystical energy out there. Daishaku Ikeda's dialogue with the astronomer Chandra Wickramasingh from the mid nineteen nineties outlines a similar viewpoint, especially in the second chapter entitled Science and Religion. Although much of the evidence I have discussed was not available at that time, Wickramasingh challenges the reductionist position from the brain that the brain is the seat of all consciousness. Ikeda refers to Bohem, Maslow and Jung in the field of science and psychology to outline levels of consciousness that transcend the individual. President Daishaku Ikeda states, "The limitation to the reductionist approach become all the more apparent when one moves from the realm of, uh, psyche, uh, physics into that of biology." Whereas Wickramasingh states, "The subject takes the subject into neurology and the..." Whereas Wickramasingh states, "The subject takes the subject into neurology and the existence of consciousness as a separate entity." These ongoing discoveries are exciting and offer a new grounding, uh, uh, offer a new grounding to how chanting works. Boom, so. Hopefully, we've got a bit of a vibe, slightly understand from a, slightly from a scientific perspective how this works. Whoa, Big Joe, it's got dark where you are, boy. So yeah, man, they're like, this is, um, as it said at the very beginning, when it talked about the experiment where they've had like, they, they, they take two photons, and then they will, literally like, say, imagine one's in the U K, one's in Australia, they're both in electromagnetic shielded rooms, they'll, they'll do an experiment on one of the photons, and simultaneously faster than the speed of light at the exact same time in Australia, in an electromagnetically shielded room, that photon vibrates. Or if me and Chris were in two different bunkers, in two different countries, and they, they, they put a torch in my eye, it will light up in his head. So today was more about the science of how chanting works, and also, there's three pillars of Buddhism or spirituality, that's faith, practice, and study. Faith, practice, and study, so you can chant all day long, yeah? But if you're not studying it, then you won't really understand it. And if you don't have faith in it, then you're wasting your time. I know all of you have the faith, and I know a lot of you are start, are starting to practice this, but when we study it, you can start to understand. So like, when I'm chanting for Chris, and I'm like, bro, like, good luck with your DJ set tonight, and then like, he's ringing me saying, bro, all these weird signs, I know you were praying for me, now I'm starting to understand why. Now I'm starting to understand that the photons in Chris are activating because I can send energy to him, and that maybe if you, if you believe in the Big Bang kind of way of things, we was all actually once, we was all connected at once, and actually, I'm not sending nothing to Chris. Chris is me, I am Chris, and instantaneously faster than the speed of light, if I have intention, he will receive that. And how beautiful is it, how glorious, glorious is it to know that the more that we purify ourself, and we drink distilled water, and we stop going to the dirty ass chicken shops, which I do sometimes, I've stopped, by the way, I remember speaking to you guys at like the second or third, I've decided to cut out meat. How amazing is it to know that we can just basically, and also, this is completely off, off topic, but I know a lot of you must know, nod if you do, about junk DNA. The idea that the junk DNA is becoming activated within us right now, twelve-stranding. So the more that this, the more that we become awoke, uh, um, awoke, and the more that our body becomes in tune with the truth of who we actually are, and we're taking back our sovereignty, and also like little things by telling the government, no, that's an act of taking our sovereignty back. How glorious is it gonna be when we don't even need to have Zoom anymore? I'm like, yo, we're all gonna do a, we're all gonna do a Buddhist study, I'm gonna be in my garden, everyone go in your garden, let's do it in the mind, yeah? And I'm telling you, we're gonna be more powerful than fifty gods when the time is right. Stand in your light, faith, practice, and study, even if it's not Buddhism, whatever you're doing, if you're doing mindfulness meditation, study that, so that it, it strengthens the practice. But most importantly, don't do none of this without faith, and what do I always say, Angelina? Don't hit the Ben of Faith with a toothpick, hit it with the actual drum, like smack that proper, because if you're chanting, but you're only studying a little bit, and then you only have a bit of faith, then the universe, if you're chanting Nam Myo Haringe Kyo, it will give you back something, but the reflection will be weak. But if you have strong faith that I am activating my eternal soul, and I, I'm studying this, like, by the way, like, if I was any of you guys, and everything that we studied, I would be rereading it, like personally, like from the start to part two of, because next time you're sitting on the train, or you're on the bus or whatever, and you're reading it, you're gonna be like, rah, like, we've gone through this, it's gonna hit you even deeper. And the next time you're chanting in front of your candle, your gohonzon, or your wall, it's just gonna mean more to you. It means so much to me to know that, and also there's like books like, um, Change Your Brainwaves, Change Your Karma, like, when you start to actually know what happens to your aura, when you actually start to see your, your chakras expanding, after only chanting, by the way, for ten minutes, the only other people that can do this, expand their, their aura that quickly, are people that meditate for like forty years. I'll give it to them, they're on the same level, but you today, two for joy, you today could chant and swear to God, be, 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 and, and, and enter the delta brainwaves. And if you know much about the delta brainwave, that's a whole nother book and a whole nother study session, but, um, let's chant for five minutes, let me take a little sip of this pine needle. But thank you for being here, as always. Like I said, it wasn't as deep today, I remember like maybe by the, the second or third one, I was thinking, oh, man, I think I may have picked the wrong book, this is deep, but I swear to God, every single one of you have sent me some kind of message afterwards to remind me that actually I'm dealing with very, 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 very strong spiritual queens and kings, and like, aye, it's my ego that's telling me that you can't handle this, and it's absolutely not for me to say, like, I know, even if it's just a part of it, it's resonating. So, where's my beads? Actually, before I start, let me quickly just read this, um, this is for, actually, I'm gonna read it afterwards, don't let me forget, I'm gonna read today's guidance, yeah? It's about work, because I know a lot of us still have to work in this Babylonian system, so. Where's my beads? I know, I'm slightly running over, so it's one minute past eight, I'm gonna chant till five past. So four minutes, let's do it. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, 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 Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Kyo. Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Kyo. Thank you, amazing, 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 amazing. I always set a challenge to people, if you can do ten minutes for twenty-one days, chat to me and tell me how, how your whole life is different, um, let me read this real quick. So, um, this is for the people that have jobs running around like chickens right now, and also simultaneously, like, healing the world with like incredible Reiki meditation and all of this stuff and chanting and spirituality, but then having to be like a three D person at the same time, this is the message for you. So September the fifteenth, it says, "I hope that each of you will realize success in your respective fields. Fully recognizing that success means not giving up halfway, but resolutely pursuing the path you have chosen. To this end, it is also important that you realize that the place where you work is a place for forging your character and growing as a human being. By extension, therefore, it is a place for your Buddhist practice, a place for practicing and deepening your faith. When you view things from this angle, all your complaints will disappear. No one is more pathetic than someone who is constantly complaining." So in a nutshell, whatever struggles you're going through right now, whatever you're having to do, um, at work, all the three D stuff, never think that you're spiritual and that you need to transcend that, yeah? It is in them daily activities we reveal ourself and we actually practice Buddhism. Buddhism is not divorced from everyday life, and so the difficulties in your workplace, it's because you have to shine. You have to be the trailblazer, you have to be that light right now, there's so many people right now, and I'm not gonna get into the, um, the, like, the, the COVID stuff too much, but there's so many people right now that, for instance, just for their own personal opinions, they're the only ones that are like slightly different to everyone else where at work right now. And it's all about how do you become the most compassionate person, but also still standing in your own sovereignty and in your own light, and you can still, and you, and you can reveal your Buddhahood at work, even in the most dire and difficult situation, uh, situations right now, where everyone is like, kind of like picking on people, and everyone wants to know where you're at, and are you, are you vaccinated and all? It's all about, can we just stand in ourself right now, reveal our Buddhahood, and absolutely not judge anyone? That's the most important as well, we cannot be judging anyone for their path or their decisions. We have to love everyone, and we have to recognize that people, whether you're vaccinating or not vaccinating, most people are doing it from the best, they're doing it from their heart to try and protect people. So if you suddenly go, oh, they're an idiot, man, they're vaccinated, like, you've already dropped into your lower life state, and you're not being a bodhisattva of the earth, you have to open up your hand, your heart as wide as possible right now. We are the treasure towers, we are that light right now, and if we go around judging people, which I, I have, I've done, I'm a Leo, I can do it quite easily, but I've recognized more and more, actually, everyone seems to be trying their hardest from their perspective, from the reality that they're seeing, to do the best thing for everyone. So all of you, I love, thank you for being here, because I know that right now, you're having to be that lighthouse and step out into society. Naomi McGee, I don't know who you are, but you have the most beautiful spirit, trust me, and the brother next to you, thank you both for being here with me. Um, so yeah, Angelina, Maria, J D, Steve, Celeste, Muna, Jules, Siobhan, Jamie, J M, Chris, my brother, Sally, Smith, the Treasure Tower, Harley, two for joy, I don't, I don't know your actual name, but I love you, man, that's a cool ass fringe that you got going on, I love it. Kaia, I hope it's Kaia, right? Kaia, Kaia, Kaia or Kaia? Kaia, I love you, um, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, Steve, my brother, I love you, man, thank you for being here, I seen that you're walking around doing all kinds of things, but you was here and you was present. And it's that ichinin, in Japanese, ichinin means you're seeking spirit, your spirit, bro, is amazing, and I love you, man, and I'm a strict person, so sorry if I've ever been too strict with any of you, but I have to be because there's just too many mad people around me right now, so I love you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and next week, if you're still here, we'll finish off Nam Myo Haringe Kyo. Big love, so much, keep being that lighthouse, yeah? Do not stop, do not stop. Love you guys, take care.